Let everyone know we did have a executive session at 6:30. Mrs. Elder?
Here.
Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mrs. Posar?
Here.
Dr. Lockland?
Here.
Mrs. Mays?
Here.
Mr. Mahler? Mr. Miz?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Dr. Sword?
I have your report, Senator.
Under the legislative report, I'd just like to point out Governor Woke will be presenting his first state budget proposal March 3rd. Education and planning.
Thank you.
We're leaving on the student report with comments.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about Speed Club and what they've been doing lately. Speed Club is in all five buildings in the district, in all three elementary schools, junior and senior high school. So far this year, they've had two trips. They have another one planned for this Friday. Recently, today was the Special Olympics of seventh grade in the junior and senior high. Speed Club helped out today. There were 25 students that went and they each prepared up with a buddy. And the buddies were then, they warmed up the buddies, like they came down the slope a couple of different times. And then after that, they cheered them on in their event. And then they had lunch with them and they spent the whole day with their buddies, helping them cheer them on. So that's what Speed Club's been up to.
Last Friday, the boys' basketball team took on the top-ranked Kent Fields Spartans. With over 1,700 fans in attendance, there wasn't an empty house or an empty seat in the entire house. The student section was even packed from edge to edge, which, this was the first time in the entire season that we had a packed student section. And the basketball booths also sold at 50/50 with a total of over $2,000. Kent Fields has been undefeated in their last 25 section games, so this was a really big deal for the Cats. With the win over the Spartans, the Wildcats moved to the top of the section in which they would share the section title with the Spartans. This was only the second time since 1991 the boys' basketball team had won the section title. Austin Beltwood of the Cats with 23 points, Sean Braithorne with 19, and Jay Biss also with the lead score with 15. The Cats will continue their season this weekend as they continue with playoffs. Also, on a more serious note, on behalf of the FCA and the entire student body, we're asking that you keep sophomore Dan Johnson in your thoughts and prayers. Dan was badly injured in a skiing accident on Saturday at seventh grade, and he's currently in Cosby Hospital recovering. Thank you.
The pass here for you.
Thank you very much. Educational progress and Dr. Pepper.
Yes, I would like to introduce Mrs. Pelles from Mountain View Elementary, who will introduce his presentation.
Good evening. This evening, we're going to be discussing our English Language Arts Tier Three programs. This is something that we at Mountain View are going to be discussing with you this evening, but it is important for all of you to know that this is similar at Bagley Elementary as well as Latrobe Elementary School. We're going to be discussing it, but we have similar programs at the other two elementary schools. We'll start with a quick story. We have a little boy that's in third grade, and I was having a conversation with him recently. And we were having a conversation about what does reading mean? What does reading mean to you? And he said that now he knows what other people are laughing about. And I was sort of, hmm, what do you mean by that? And then whenever we continued to ask him about that, what he meant was, "Read me shirts." All the kids are now wearing these "Read Me" shirts. And he said everybody would be laughing at these things that they would see, and he never knew what they were laughing at because he couldn't read them. And now, we've made so much growth in our Tier Three reading program, he now can read. And so he said now he loves it. He knows what other people are laughing about. And you actually see him at the end of our presentation, he is wearing a shirt that says, "Trust me, I'm a rocket scientist." And he said it makes him laugh because now he says, "I know what everybody else is laughing about whenever they're looking at these T-shirts." So I think that's sort of part of what we're going to be discussing tonight with our Tier Three programs that we have at the elementary school. The name of the Tier Three programs are Read Well and Language. What is important for all of us to understand is at this point in all of our buildings, we're talking about achievement, but then also growth with all of our students. We've had conversations in the past about just the achievement. We're making AYPs or the students proficient. But now we have these conversations about growth. All students need to make sure that they are growing. We have high expectations for all of our students, but how we get them there may be different, student by student. You can go ahead and click into our SPP for Mountain View. Just going to show you what I mean by the achievement and growth. Here, when you're looking at our SPP score for Mountain View, you will see we have our achievement scores, which is what we have seen in the past, that we have the growth, if you continue down. We also talk about the growth. You can see indicators of academic growth are our P-VOX scores. That's an area of concern we've had at Mountain View. We talked about our SPP scores. That was one of the things I talked to you about, is the growth of all of our students. The other part, too, that this actual presentation will be hitting on, is the closing the achievement gap for historically underperforming students. When we're talking about historically underperforming students, this subgroup includes our students that have IEPs, our Individual Education Plans, and the students that are in our Tier Three program. You don't have to have an IEP to be in a Tier Three program, but what I can tell you is the individuals that we'll be discussing, many of them will have an IEP. And we need to make sure that they are achieving, of course, but then also making that growth and closing the achievement gap, especially for those historically underperforming students because they will be both in our regular score for all of our students, but then also our historically underperforming students.
Go back to order.
So again, high expectations for all of our students, but how we get there and how we get them there may vary. Okay. If we talk about our RTI chart, our Response to Intervention and Instruction chart, you can see here we talk about this triangle. We have Tier One programs, which is the majority of our students. We hope for 80% of our students to be in that core instruction. Tier Two is the next year that a child could go into, which is targeted intervention, which for us is your tier program or your core program, but then also additional instruction for them. And then finally, the top tier, your Tier Three students, are the students that need the true intensive intervention. And you're looking at hopefully around 5% of your students being in that Tier Three program. Here I have for you, at Mountain View, at this point, we just went through our mid-year assessment. Right now, we have 557 Mountain View students on a Tier One or just in our core program, which is 86%. For Tier Two, we're at 79 Mountain View students, which is 12%. And for Tier Three, we have 13 Mountain View students, which is 2%. So as you can see, when you're looking at that triangle, we're actually doing a little bit better than what we would be looking at for an RTI chart with that triangle. So we're doing a little bit better than what is expected when you're looking at an RTI model. For our ELA, our English Language Arts program, for Tier One, you probably hear us talk about Storytown. Storytown is our core program. All students, less than in Tier Three, are in Storytown. Storytown is the program that we use for Tier One. Tier Two, so if they're not making growth, what we want to see, or we see that there's a skill deficit, a child may go into Tier Two, which is the second part of that triangle. For us, it's that Storytown with the skills group. Skills group can be multiple different things depending on whatever the skill deficit may be. And I have those listed, which are some of the programs that we use at all of our elementary schools as a Tier Two reading intervention. And then finally, we have our Tier Three. The two programs that we use in Tier Three are Read Well, which is kindergarten through third grade, and Language, which is fourth grade through sixth grade. This evening, we're going to be talking about that Tier Three intervention, the Tier Three program. Mrs. Jennifer Singler is going to be speaking about Read Well, which is the K3 program. And Mr. Anthony Soranko is going to be speaking about Language, which is the four through six program. Mrs. Singler.
Hi. I'm going to be talking to you about Read Well. And with Read Well, it is very heavy on phonics and decoding skills, learning the basics of how to read. So first, we're going to go ahead and talk about decoding, listening, awareness, phonics, and then fluency. With this, we talk about letter sounds, segmenting, blending, multi-syllabic words. We do heavy repeated readings, reading with expression, and we do timed readings. Here are some examples. In my classroom, I have my bulletin board, and we do a lot of letter sound recognition. If we talk about, if the word is sheep, and the kids need help with the S-H, I say shivering sheep. And then here we say shivering sheep, they know that's an S-H sound. I do this throughout the day, throughout our readings, and through our spelling. Daily, we do a decoding page where it takes all the sounds that we talk about in each unit, and again, multi-syllabic words, learning how to break things up and then putting them And this is a sample of a reading. The first page is with a teacher that I read with them, and we have heavy comprehension questions. And then the second page is on your own. They read it as a group, repeated readings to me, and as homework. Next is our comprehension, which is vocabulary, knowledge, and we work on comprehension strategies. Here are examples of our vocabulary. With every unit, we have multiple pages with vocabulary, as does Storytown. We worked through describing, using given sentences, and how it relates us. This is an example of one of the comprehension packages, a student did. And next is our technology. We have a program, Ticket to Read, and this is used as centers during everyday instruction. It is self-paced. Students take a pre-test and see where they are scored and where they level. They complete tasks in phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension. And it keeps it interactive. The kids can decorate their clubhouse, or they can stock their shelves with a toy shop. And here are examples. Here is the toy shop. And as they complete different phonics activities, they earn coins. And then they can go shopping with these coins and buy toys for the toy shop. And this is a clubhouse. And with this, they will be reading passages and having to answer comprehension questions that include a lot of vocabulary. And then they get to decorate their clubhouse. Next is Fluency Works. And this is an online program that improves fluency in vocabulary as well as comprehension. And this is, as like Storytown, they can go in and read stories that they're working on. It'll read them to them, they can read it back, and it highlights the words as it goes so they can get better with their fluency. And then last is Vport, and this is a dynamic management system where I'm able to go in and put their scores, and then I can see how they are compared to other students in that unit, and what I need to work on next. It'll run reports saying that their deficit is in this decoding skill, and it'll give me suggestions on what else I can do to help them. And next is Performance Plus. All the kids in Braggertrope are on Performance Plus with their storytelling benchmark, with their DIBL score, and we are just now recently adding our Tier Three students. And this is, they're showing their growth. This is a particular student that he began this year, beginning of the year, and he has shown tremendous growth. He wasn't able to fully read on a third grade level. He was in the beginning of second grade, but now we are almost making our achievement to end in a second grade level, so that he must grow tremendously.
And this is Mr. Soranko for Language.
As Mrs. Pelles said, I teach the intermediate grades four through six, Tier Three language program. Each day in our program, we go through six steps in our sequence. We start with the sounds that we produce to make language, and we eventually develop it into the text that goes with language. So each day, we start with phonemic awareness, and we listen to the sounds that we make. They go together to make words. The second step would be word recognition and spelling. So those sounds coming together to make the words that we use every day. Then we look at the meanings of those words and where those words come from. We talk about grammar and how we use those words in our language. We then go to listening and reading comprehension, where we put those words together in sentences, and now we're understanding how we use those words. And then they're actually speaking and writing and producing language in their own way, all within one day's lesson. The general idea is we're starting with the smallest unit of language, which are the sounds that we make. We go through all of those steps, and we hit on the processing systems in the brain that allow students to learn language, those being context, meaning, phonological awareness, which are the sounds that we make, and orthography, which are the letters that we use to represent the sounds that we're making. So every day, we're trying to hit on all four of those processing systems in the brain to really trigger their minds to remember and develop appropriate language skills. Some of the activities that we use on a daily basis are a verbal call and response, which is very much a direct instruction activity, where I may tell the students, "Repeat after me. Say the word cat," and they respond. "Say the word cat." Tell me the words that you hear, or tell me the sounds you hear and not learn. And they break it down. Act. Identifying the phonemes that make that word go together. There are kinesthetic learning activities as well. A lot of research was done with this program, and it's known that the left side of our brain controls our reading ability. So when the students are learning these words and sounds, they're actually anchoring words with their right hand, which is also controlled by the left brain. So they're saying these words and sounds while making a motion. The idea is that it helps to kind of rewire their brain to remember those language components. So it's kind of a new kinesthetic approach to helping recall. We do it at Pope Day Learn, maybe kindergarten, first or second grade, but we're revisiting it with this new approach. As I said, we go through grammar, verbal and written language, and then we're reading well in text. The text, the program has three different texts. There's an instructional text that I work on with the students. Independent texts to boost their confidence, things that they can read on their own. And then there are challenge texts for those students that are really excelling at the program. They need a little extra push and enrichment within the language program. These pictures aren't the best, but there's a few examples of our workbook. We have sentence diagram, so we go back to some of the classic techniques in identifying how to build a sentence. This is highly effective for our Tier Three students. Many of our Tier Three students are very literal, and this allows them to see exactly how to put a sentence together and where each piece of that sentence belongs. We talk about speech and how we develop sounds. Do we use our throat? Do we use our tongue or our teeth? How do we make that sound appropriately in producing those phonemes? We sort grammar, concrete versus abstract nouns, proper nouns, common nouns, pro nouns, all kinds of different things. And then on the right, there's a segmenting activity where they have to take the sounds in a word and write the letters that represent each sound in the word that I give them. There is an online component of language as well. The first is vocab journey. It is an online program that allows the students to explore words, their meaning. It is very much animated. They click on words, they make flashcards on the computer, reads it to them, uses it in a sentence, shows pictures. It's really a comprehensive approach to learning the meanings of these words. We also have something called sorting words for our lower functioning students. And this allows our students to sort words based on maybe onset and rhyme, as you see here, what words and what and versus at versus at, to really identify the different sounds that we made. I put some results in here because I could stand here and talk about this program forever, and that's great, but really, the results are what are most important. How is this affecting our students? I have two sixth grade students here that I've had the pleasure of working with for a year and a half. One of them came to us from another district, and when she was tested, she had a negative Lexile in fifth grade, reading below a kindergarten level. After a year and a half, we're approaching the second grade reading level. And the second student came in with Lexile of 90, which is about 1.2, about first grade level. And after a year and a half, he's quickly approaching the fourth grade reading level. This program is very research-based, and we've seen a lot of positive results from it. So that would be my lead table.
And we're going to leave you with, some of our students that are part of our program are going to explain to you what reading means to them. Any questions? Excuse me?
Very nice.
Oh, thank you. Do you want any additional information about Ida Corver? We do have the campus that Superswiss provides us, that we have, if you want any more information about Ida, we call her Language. Thank you. I just think that's nice to work on the board, take my hat off, and just sort of care of it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Isn't it funny I'm saying these guys? Isn't it funny? Good thing one of yours got phonics or BS. That's why.
Item D is to approve outside of school, our experiential education in corporate, private academic school contract for day treatment. Cindy, you want that?
Sure. Outside, who's been around for a while, and they have residential programs, but they recently opened a day school. The value of this particular day school is they will work with general education students as well as special education students. Sometimes it's hard to find places for students who need to be off, out of the school, but they don't have special ed needs. And it's not particularly expensive. We will need to prove that on next week's agenda. Item E is to approve to host a WSCMEA Western Conference Association Festival Thursday, November 19th and Friday, November 20th, 2015, according to the United. The curriculum committee meeting minutes are attached, and Mrs. Pepper talks about those at the last meeting, half a week later, if we have any, they're there for you to read. And the next curriculum committee meeting day will be Tuesday, April 1st at 5:30 Eastern.
Mrs. Aubrey, I want to go check next, will be the church report in Joe's.
Well, actually, you know what? I'm going to defer to Dr. Pepper to talk about her. She did most of it.
We spoke about Project Leave the Way opportunities in our last curriculum meeting, and we just found out today around 3 o'clock that we were granted grants, or I should say, we were awarded grants for the senior high school for the three-year period, $45,000, to begin our STEM program and our courses in engineering, as well as in the junior high school for $30,000 over two years. We also applied at the elementary level. We have not heard about the elementary level, but we still have high hopes that possibly they could come in as well. And we applied for all of our elementary buildings, and we are very excited to have this continual STEM program. And we hope to have K through 12, as we spoke about in our curriculum meeting, but if not, we know for certain that we will be able to have the courses offered in our junior and senior high schools and continue to add courses throughout the years to have that vertical alignment with the STEM program. And not just in our technology department, that's where we're starting, we are starting in the technology department, but also then integrating with our math department and our spelling departments as well. We're very excited about that.
So our teachers can go for training, are ready to go.
Yes, the money are utilized for obviously the materials needed for the courses, as well as the equipment, but also the intensive professional development, which is required. And our teachers will be attending throughout the summer. At the senior high school for the courses, it's a two-week professional development training for one course. At the junior high level, it's a one-week training program for one course. And we do have three of our teachers who are committed to attending the trainings and providing the course options for us. And the E-Rate award?
Okay, this is, we go through this process every year. Under the E-Rate guidelines, you have post four seven, and then award certain telecommunications services on an annual basis. This year, it was for internet services as well as for cell phone services. We received two bids, one met criteria, and actually with the lowest bid, once again, for the internet. So we're recommending to award to the Westmore reading unit again. That would be $15,000 per year. It's a three-year contract, so we're going to be doing that for a three-year period. The others for our cell phones, we do that annually, so we'll be awarding to Sprint once again. They came with the lowest rate. The reason we follow the process is if I go through this process, we receive 48% reimbursement through the E-Rate program for these all telecommunications services that are eligible, which these two are eligible for. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. The other item we'll be asking to approve next week is GASBID 45 under that guideline that government and county standards were required to have an actual study done every two years of our other post-employment benefits so that we can report that out on our financial statements. Basically, what they do is they take a snapshot of the district and all contracts that are available, and they do a study of what it would cost if the district were shut down today, what type of retirement benefits would we be obligated to pay for. We take that number, we put it into our audit of financial statements.
Yes, next week we'll have an agenda item to approve some of the projects that are listed below, and the double asterisk signifies that they need to be authorized for the.
But not the elementary school break.
That's a one to the one back for the specialty. Our next meeting minutes are listed as attachment, and our next meeting is probably March twelfth at three thirty.
And our next activities, the athletic meeting, as Mrs. Tucker has said, is next Monday at five thirty at the high school. Anybody is welcome to attend on the board, and it's the conference room next to the principal's. And also, I would like to piggyback Courtney's about the basketball team. They made a makeup game against Uniontown last night, and it was ninety-four, ninety-two, and Uniontown's closer this year. So that was also our win. I conclude one.
Well, we just got the basketball parent sent to us for the playoffs. The boys' team will play at Charleroy Saturday at two thirty against Upper St. Clair. The girls' team will play next Tuesday at North Donaghy against North Donaghy with a site time to be determined. We just did it at seven o'clock, so that's the parent. And the boys' team will play seven this evening.
Thank you for the next. And Dr. Zoltsch for community information.
Stand there, no relations with him.
Mrs. May, she's the IU.
Never wave my seat.
Agenda item for next week would be to authorize participation in the WIU joint purchasing consortiums and multipurpose paper bid for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. The WIU committee meeting minutes are attached from our last meeting on January seventh, two thousand and fifteen. And the next WIU committee meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at seven thirty in the WIU boardroom.
Thank you. Mrs. Pezza.
Yes, the previous meetings minutes are listed on your agenda, and our next JOC meeting will be Wednesday, November twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Mrs. Oliver for policy. Who will be asking you to approve my first reading, the long list of policies there. And all you need to do when you want to read them is click on the number, and you can read the changes, most of which were facilitated by the new laws regarding child abuse and endangerment, et cetera, that went into effect as of this year. And there were some changes also to the school code, which were made necessary by those changes in the law. So that's what that's going to be. And there's going to be a meeting tomorrow morning at the admin building of the policy committee, and I'd be happy to attend. And that will be for the second half of the group. It needs to be changed for the same reason. Thank you. Mrs. Music, transportation.
Mr. Palmer, technology. We got our contract meeting proceeding. The meeting is, we missed it a month's package, and we are not having a meeting next, this month, right? No meeting next month. Right? Got it. Thank you.
I think last month we started reporting out on our meeting, so I'll just elaborate a little bit on what Mr. Palmer stated there. Couple of things we discussed at tonight's meeting. The first one is creating a site in our district administration building as a cogit three N fingerprint site. The reason we were discussing this is because there is a law passed December very first of last year, Act one fifty-three, which increases the frequency with which school employees, excuse me, employees need to get their clearances, participating state police reporting, and FBI fingerprint services are reporting done. And it's going to be a greatly increased burden on employees, and there are limited number of sites that will do this. And so we looked into contracting to be able to do this at our central administration building. And we have to offer publicly a minimum of twenty-four hours, but do get a transaction fee paid back for it. So we're kind of in the process of looking into that. Mr. Nichols is investigating the contract that we have, but it's something that we're looking forward to hopefully getting set up for ourselves. One of the other things we talked about is upgrading equipment in our broadcast and production studio. Probably about ten to fifteen years ago, Mr. Papiewa, you said?
I'd say more.
Okay, maybe more than that. We had equipment that was donated to us from a technology company to create a broadcast TV studio in our senior high school. And it's kind of come around that that equipment needs to be upgraded. So we've been investigating some pricing, and to upgrade that equipment is obviously a lot less expensive than it was with the initial implementation. And so we talked about moving forward with that, trying to implement that in this school year so that it's not a new thing kind of forward to the mix at the beginning of next year. It will provide us the ability of converting from the analog signal that we currently use there to digital signal, as well as provide us some streaming capability. At this point in time, the past several years, we've streamed graduation online, but we'd like to have the capability to be able to stream other events throughout the district, and this will provide us with that capability. Budget for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, as far as technology goes, I had just highlighted some three main areas with the committee that I'll probably be directing towards, and that is looking more toward electronic textbooks and resources for our students with the technology that we have available, with what they are coming to us with, just kind of building on that, retiring XP machines that are in the district as that is at its life, and looking to the building principals for direction on some building-specific initiatives that they may have. I gave an update on our enrollment in our ECAT online program, which has pretty much remained stable since the beginning of the year. And a couple other updates that I'm currently working on with the senior high is for students scheduling for next year to be able to make those requests online through our home access portal themselves prior to meeting with our guidance counselor and confirming those choices. And then also online enrollment, which we're hoping to have with our kindergarten registration, and then roll that into something that we would, you know, offer to anyone and to everyone. And that's it. We'll have minutes for next week's agenda. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
We have five substitute names we would ask the board to approve next week, as well as the psychology intern who works with Dr. Solis on an annual basis, and her name is Lindsay Miller from IUP. Just some other dates of importance is this month's Breakfast of Champion is Thursday, February nineteenth. The Polar Palooza, which is also an annual event at High School, is next Friday, February eighth. The Joint Operating Committee meeting this month will be Wednesday, February twenty-fifth. And the Musical God's Show, which I had mentioned previously, is March thirteenth and fourteenth. If any of the board members are interested in tickets, they should see Mrs. Solis house. And obviously, the public has invited them, and they can call the high school for tickets. Board meeting dates are there. Thank you. Must anybody ask anything further, any comments, questions?